Welcome. This meeting of the Lincoln City Council, a meeting as a Board of Equalization, is called to order in accordance with L.B. 898. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chambers. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is an election of the Chair for the Board of Equalization meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Move that Leary and Gaylord Baird be the Chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
Great. Moved by Trenton, seconded by Roy. Please call the roll. Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next, I'll read the items into the record. They are the College View Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from South Forty-Eighth Street between Calvert Street and Pioneer's Boulevard. Havelock Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from Havelock Avenue from Cornhusker Highway on the west to Sixty-Fourth Street on the east. North Twenty-seventh Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from North Twenty-sixth Street on the west to North Twenty-eighth Street on the east and from the centerline of O Street on the north to Fair Street on the south, primarily including those properties abutting North Twenty-seventh Street. South Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from South Street from the alley west of Ninth Street, east to Nineteenth Street. University Place Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending along North Forty-Eighth Street from Colby Street on the south to the half-block north of Adam Street on the north and along St. Paul Avenue from North Forty-seventh Street to North Fiftieth Street. And the West O Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally along West O Street from Third Street on the east to Homestead Expressway on the west and including the property abutting the north and south sides of said West O Street right-of-way.
And just to clarify and a little context, each year the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances, and today we are here as the Board of Equalization to equalize the assessments for several such districts as read by the clerk. The land described in each district is benefited by the improvements in the particular district, and the cost of these districts is then paid by the city through its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited property owners and reimburse its revolving fund. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the City Council for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization, as we are now. After, we'd like to bring up a representative from the Urban Development Department to make a brief statement about each of the districts, and then following that, anyone who wishes to testify may please come forward and just sign in after giving your testimony, please. All right, welcome.
My name is Ron Kane. I'm with the Urban Development Department, and five of the districts have previously been assessed. Then the assessments that are before you today are based on the time period January 1 through December 31 of 2016. West O Street is undergoing its first assessment and was approved by resolution by council in 2016. So the time period being assessed for this district is actually going to be June 24 through December 31 of 2016. And I'm here to try to answer any questions you may have on any of these assessments.
Any questions for Ron? All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward and testify on these items? All right, seeing none. Teresa?
All right. If not, we can vote to assess these items as they stand.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt all of the assessed districts.
Second.
Okay. The motion to accept the assessed districts was presented by John and seconded by Roy. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now we'll move into the, oh, well, I guess we are adjourned as a Board of Equalization. We'll move into the council, regular council meeting, and the order of business for the City Council meeting is as follows. The clerk will read the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak on an item should come forward after that item has been read. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, followed by those who are opposed. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal, and we would ask that speakers please sign in following giving your comments into the pink slip of paper at the microphone. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. As a reminder, the timer will sound after four minutes, and after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Courtesy and decorum are expected of all who come before this body. We would ask that no one approach city staff without permission from the council, and please no applauding, booing, or other expression of support or opposition except through your testimony. All cell phones should be turned off and private conversations taken outside the chamber. And during the week, if you have questions regarding an agenda item, feel free to contact any of us on the council. Teresa, would you please call the first item?
Yes, our first item will be our public hearing consent agenda, items one through ten.
Anyone like to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda?
I think we have one appointment, Shane Meiniger.
Okay.
If you would please come forward.
Hello, Shane Meiniger, and...
State your address, please, for the record.
The address that they have listed is actually not what my current address is. It's 4201 West A is my old address, and do I need to report my new address?
Give us your current one for the record. Look at that fix. Thank you.
Yep. It's 6300 Southwest 91st Street, Denton, 68339.
Well, thank you for coming down. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your interest in this particular board?
I've been...
Sprinkler and Chemical Examining Board.
I've had a fire spectacular company in Lincoln since 2005, and they've asked me to be on the board before, but there was somebody else on it, and then they called me here recently and asked me to be on the board now, and so I told them I would do it.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Any questions in the council? All right. Thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay. Teresa, please take a seat.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Then items three, four, and seven and eight were introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I will call items 11 and 12 together. There are the application of Bread and Cup for a Class C liquor license at 440 North Eighth Street, as well as the related manager application of Kevin Shin.
Raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be? Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Nick Cusick, recent purchaser along with some investors in Bread and Cup. Kevin and his wife have been involved in Bread and Cup for over 10 years, or I think this is the 10th year, and Kevin is staying on as the liquor manager, and I'm the manager of the LLC that owns Bread and Cup. So, operating on a temporary liquor permit right now.
Okay. Would you mind just stating your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Nick Cusick. 6400 West Shore Drive is my home address, 68516.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, since Kevin's the guy with the license, I guess we should hear from him.
I'm Kevin Shin, 356 South Fifty-third Street in Lincoln.
Okay. Yes. Well, thanks, Kevin. Thanks for what you do and the unique venue that you provide to the community, and you've been in practice for a long time. Several of us serve on the Internal Liquor Committee. I don't ever remember anything relative to Bread and Cup. You do a great job. Thank you. Thanks, girl.
All right. Well, thank you for coming down today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, please call the next item. Teresa?
All right. Next are items 13 and 14. They're the application of Big Red Restaurant and Sports Bar for a Class C liquor license at 8933 Andermatt Drive, and the related manager application of Troy Olson. Raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am Bill Harvey. I'm one of the owners of Endgame Management, Endgame Operating Group, and we're opening a new Big Red Restaurant and Sports Bar. We're actually building it now, and our proposed open date is June 1. At least, knock on wood, that's what we're hoping for. And we're opening at the corner, well, there's a development, a commercial development at 84th and Highway 2 here in Lincoln, and we're opening on one of the lots there out in front of the Menards Store. So, we're very excited to be opening our second location in Lincoln. We've had our original location open now for about 20 years, so we're very much looking forward to that. Troy Olson is going to be our manager for that location. Troy has been with our company for a number of years. For the last eight years, he's been our liquor license manager in Norfolk, Nebraska, and our very successful restaurant there. And before that, Troy actually managed our restaurant out on West O Street for several years. So he's been a liquor license manager here before in Lincoln.
Could you just give us the address of the new establishment for the record?
Yes. 8933 Andermatt Drive.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, please call the next item. Teresa?
All right. I'll call items 15 and 16 together. They're the application of Talon Room for a Class CK liquor license at 230 North 12th Street, Suite 1, and the related manager application of Matthew Rogie. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Matt Rogie. My address is 1540 Garrett Lane, apartment 211, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68512. I recently purchased the Talon Room from Chef A Chef LLC. I was with Chef A Chef and still am, mainly operating under their catering company, just as a part-time while I'm getting the Talon Room back up. Aaron Young, the owner of Chef A Chef, and myself, we kind of partnered together to work that out, and I was the director of the Talon Room, and when the opportunity arrived, I decided to take over with my own company. My fiancee, Nicole Raybine, and I are the owners of Seven Diamonds LLC, and we operate the Talon Room together, so.
Well, any questions from the council? Girl?
Yeah. So tell us about the Talon Room, what it is, what it's going to be.
Sure. The Talon Room is an event space in the Old Spaghetti Works Building, 230 North 12th Street, Suite Number One. We do mostly weddings and private events. We are opening up more public events to operate during the week more often, and we are also looking to do off-site beverage catering as well. So, that's our main operation.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Wish you best of luck. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next are items 17 and 18, application of Fat Jack's Barbecue for a Class IK liquor license at 101 Southwest 14th Street, and the related manager application of Jacqueline Burt. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Burt. I am a member-owner of Fat Jack's Barbecue. Address is 6232 Northwest Fifth Street, 68521.
Okay. And would you like to tell us a little more about the...
Sure. We have been in business for nine years as a restaurant, currently moved to our new location on Westo two months ago, where we will have a location large enough that we would like to serve beer because it goes great with barbecue.
Any questions? Cindy?
Hi, thanks for being here today. So, I appreciate the fact that you are working with Companion Link to put some folks to work out there at Fat Jack's, and I've heard great things. Is it going well?
Very well. We have been very blessed. They are great team members, and I can imagine it worked out better, beyond our expectations.
Good to know. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 19, manager application of Peter Clark for Marketplace IGA at 4646 West Huntington Avenue.
Hello.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Clark. I live at 940 Pine Ridge Road, Crete, Nebraska, 68333, and I've owned a grocery store out in Nera Park for 10 years, and I am applying to be the manager out there.
Any questions? Well, thank you for coming down. Would anyone else like to testify on these items? This item. Seeing none, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 20, manager application of Robert Miller for Huskerville Pub and Pizza at 2805 Northwest 48th Street.
Good afternoon. Oh, pardon me.
Quite all right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Miller. My address is 5130 West Sparrow Lane in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68528. And this is for the liquor manager for Huskerville Pub and Pizza out in Nera Park there. Had a vacated position in the LLC, Jason Neiman originally held this manager position. He got married and moved to Wyoming. So, my wife and I took his place, bought into the LLC, and that's how this all came to be.
Any questions? Congratulations. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much, guys.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? Please call the next item.
All right. Next is item 21, manager application of Jay Gates for Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar at 3730 Village Drive, 6100 O Street, Unit 308, and 3951 North 27th Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Gates. I'm the Director of Risk Management for RMH. We operate 175 Applebee Restaurants in 15 states, including all 11, or not all, but 11 Applebees here in the state of Nebraska, and our previous Chief Administrative Officer, who left the company at the end of the year, left word for me to take over the liquor license, so that's why I'm here.
Any questions? Thank you for being here today. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next time.
All right. Next is item 22, application of Whole Foods Market, Nebraska LLC, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 100 feet by 100 feet at Whole Foods Market at 6055 O Street on May 20, between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Welcome. Just state your name and address.
My name is Leslie Smith. I live at 1260 Belmont Avenue, Lincoln, 68521.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about the event?
We are doing a seafood boil, and we would like to do the event outside in a barricaded area in our parking lot, so we can have a Zydeco band and beer on tap with the seafood boil.
Okay. Any questions? John?
Out of curiosity, Ms. Smith, you've got some neighbors there to the south. Is this anything that might be disruptive to those neighbors later hours?
We're only going to be doing the event from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Great. Thank you so much for being...
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please call the next item, Teresa.
Next is item 23, application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 700 feet by 448 feet at the Pinewood Bowl Theater at 4201 South Cottington on May 18, 19, and 20, June 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 15, 16, and 17, July 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29, and August 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 19, 20, and 21, between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Lorenz, General Manager with Pinnacle Bank Arena, and we also do the Pinewood Bowl concerts. This is our opportunity to request SDLs to do the alcohol service out at Pinewood Bowl. The SDLs requested today cover the first 10 shows we've announced. There's potentially another two or three that we'll be adding later. The area that we'll serve alcohol within is fenced area at Pinewood Bowl. This is our sixth year of doing concerts out there. This also allows us to do a bit in the backstage area. Very successful concert series, and we support, we love the support we get from Lincoln, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Girl?
Thank you. Tom, how many years have we been doing concerts at Pinewood Bowl?
So this will be our sixth year. It's gone very quickly, and we've had, been able to do some upgrades out in the bowl along with parks and some different things, and so people will see a little bit of a new look, but the bowl itself is still very much intact, and the artists love it as much as the patrons do.
Very green out there this year.
It is green. We were just out there a couple days ago, and so it's an exciting place to do it, and, you know, what a great setting. We think we have a nice variety of shows this year, anything from, you know, Willie Nelson coming out, which will be kind of the big show for the summer, and Two Cellos, so we'll have someone up on stage playing classic rock and classic music with the same instruments. And so it's a nice variety, and again, we really appreciate that we get to work so closely with parks in the city to take advantage of this wonderful opportunity out there.
That was my next question for you, and we have our city engineer representative over here. So, well, how would one get to Pinewood Bowl this summer?
This summer, there'll be, and what you're referring to is the roundabout that'll happen at Cottington out there, and we've been able to work already with general contractor and with the city and look at some of our opportunities. So, on the website, we'll have alternate ways to get in, but the construction will happen in four phases, and there is a sense that there will be at least one lane going through, out to the bowl through most of the summer. What we'll suggest to people is to travel down either West A or even better, West O, out to West 40th, and then down and come in from the west. That's an ideal way, and it actually, it feeds into the bowl quite nicely. Some of the exit capacity will either be back out onto, through what we would call the Elk Gate, or through the Bison Gate back onto Cottington. And we've worked closely with the park guys, Matt and everyone else out there, as far as how we do traffic, and we'll constantly update people. There'll be some articles in the paper about it, plus a lot of information on our website, pinnacle, or excuse me, pinewoodtheater.com.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom?
I move approval of item 23. Oh, excuse me.
Oh, wait. Would anyone else like to testify on these items?
Thanks. I move approval of items 11 through 23.
I think we have a...
Oh, she's coming forward. Okay.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. We would support any income that SMG and the Pinnacle Bank Arena can add to their financial deficit, which can erase part of the financial deficit of the city and the West Haymarket JPA, which we find deplorable at the amount of about $1 million.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Now, I will move approval of items 11 through 23.
Move by Roy and seconded by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 24 is approving Endgame Operating Group LLC doing business as Big Red Restaurant and Sports Bar as a Kino Satellite Site at 8933 Andermatt Drive.
Bill Harvey, and our location address is 8933 Andermatt Drive, and we are here with a Kino Satellite Application. So basically, this location will be a satellite location of our other location on West O Street. The numbers will be drawn on West O Street, and just like with any other satellite in Lincoln, will be transmitted to this location.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Very efficient of you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 25, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of April 1 through the 15, 2017.
Would anyone like to come forward to speak to a claim? All right. Please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next then is item 26, approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Lancaster County on behalf of Lancaster County Corrections Community Service Program to conduct roadside litter pickup along county roads by inmates and to provide supervision of the inmates for a term of May 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017.
Hi, Judy Hallstead, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, here to bring the city-county interlocal agreement to you. This is one, according to my records, I think it's the 13th year that we have utilized the litter reduction recycling grant funds to award $5,000 to Lancaster County Corrections. Many of you will remember, these are individuals who are in county corrections for short periods of time. They have to earn the privilege to be participating in the roadside cleanup. Generally, they're there for crimes such as writing bad checks or not paying child support, but they are supervised. And what our grant funds go towards is helping to offset some of the cost of the supervision of the inmates out doing this work. And they typically have been the group that has done more than any other, and they continue to be great partners with us in this effort, and so we appreciate that. We don't have a lot of groups that often do the county roads, and they take care of some of the county roads for us. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Cindy?
Can you tell me the source of the grant funds?
Sure. It's Nebraska Department of Environmental Qualities, Litter Reduction and Recycling Funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Judy? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right. Next is item 27, approving an interlocal agreement between the city and the UNL Board of Regents to provide, maintain, and update online food handler training programs as federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and guidelines change.
Thank you again, Judy Hallstead, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. A few weeks ago, Scott Holmes brought an interlocal agreement to you between the city and UNL to do the actual hosting site for our online food handler and our responsible beverage server permits. And so, this is actually for us to contract with them for the content changes. So as we've made changes to the content of the training, either city law has changed, or a regulation or standard has changed in the food handler industry, we have, we are under contract with them to actually make those online changes for us. So, again, they've been a wonderful partner with us since we went online. I believe it was in 2009, and they continue to update that for us regularly through these funds. It is a two-year agreement, and with an opportunity to extend that if both parties agree.
Cindy?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for making yourself available when I was looking for this particular site for someone. I appreciate that very much. And as I understand it, the whole project is funded by the user fees.
It is. That is correct.
Okay, so there's no cost to the city?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This is your last time testifying before us in your current capacity as Health Director for the city and county, and we're, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
You've had such impeccable work, and done so much to promote and protect the health of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and we're very sorry to see you go. Feel free to come back and testify on things and heckle us as a citizen.
I'll be here for open mic now.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
Join Trent.
I just want to thank each of you, because each of you have been very supportive of the Health Department and the work that we have done, and, and I really appreciate each one of you for your individual support to me and to the department, because all of you have helped to make us a better department. We hope that we have represented you well in your policies, and I just want to be able to thank you for your service as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that takes us to the end of the public hearing for resolutions. Teresa?
All right, next are our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item twenty-eight is amending Title II of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to establishing an appropriate funding level for the city's police and fire pension plans.
Good afternoon, council, Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, and with me is Paul Lutomsky, Pension Officer for the Police and Fire Pension. This ordinance change that we're proposing updates the funding policy for the Police and Fire Pension. We've given you some information in pre-council last week, reminding you that this comes from a recommendation from the Citizens Pension Review Committee that was held last year, and we bring this forward now. Paul Lutomsky will give you briefly some of the historical information and some of the detail that comes up to this point. Paul. Teresa.
Sure, Ken.
Thank you.
Also, and we have our actuaries present as well, if you have questions of our actuaries.
City Clerk is handing out, my name is Paul Lutomsky, and the City of Lincoln Police and Fire Pension Officer. City Clerk just handed out Appendix B that you have in your packets already, but this one, just in case, has some language highlighted in yellow that I'll refer to.
Paul, could you bring the microphone a little closer to you? It's hard to hear. Thank you.
The other handout is basically my presentation of the history that Doug spoke about on the funding policy. The origin of the policy really comes from a Citizen Committee Report issued May two thousand sixteen.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? Sorry, did you say there's another handout with the history? Because we have Appendix B.
On the last page.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just trying to make a guess, I'm sorry.
Keeping us on our toes. Thank you.
I'll take both of them. The piece of paper that I'm going to work off of is headed with Lincoln City Council Monday, May one, three PM, Agenda twenty-eight, number seventeen fifty-six, and has a next line down that says "origin," back to the Citizen Committee Report, that was, Citizen Committee began in fall of two thousand fifteen, they did a comprehensive review of the pension plan, issued their report in May two thousand sixteen, and their recommendation number two is listed below, which regards the funding policy that we're looking at today. It says, "The city should establish a funding policy that follows objectives and recommendations consistent with the Government Finance Officers Association and the Actuarial Community. Funding should be at the greater of the ARC, which is an acronym that stands for Actuarially Recommended Contribution, or normal cost." Normal cost is a term that is used to represent the cost of the pension plan for the coming year, assuming that everything goes according to plan. Continues, as the policy should include amortization periods for future unfunded liabilities that do not exceed twenty years. So as a result of that, the city worked with the plan's actuary consulting firm, which is Kavanaugh McDonald, and they report to the council every year with their annual report. We worked with them to develop a funding policy that met the city's objectives. So this isn't a policy that they developed in a vacuum, this policy was developed in conjunction with them and the city to meet the city's objectives. Just as by way of their credentials, Kavanaugh is the Actuarial Consultant also for the City of Omaha Civilian and the Police and Fire Pension Plans, and they are the consultants for all of the state and Nebraska defined benefit plans. Policy before you is a best-practice document that takes into consideration advice on pension fund, funding from the Conference of Consulting Actuaries, their industry standards, and the Government Finance Officers Association. So some acronyms that will occur that I wanted to get out of the way first. There's something called UAL, which you've heard before, or UAAL. Both of these things refer to the unfunded accrued liability, and just as a refresher, that is about a fifty-million-dollar unfunded accrued liability. The plan is eighty percent funded right now. The other acronym is kind of a, the ARC, the ARC, that was referred to by the Citizen Committee. That terminology has since then been replaced by basically something that means the same thing, but they're calling it ADEC for Actuarially Determined Employer Contribution, more of a generic term rather than a, basically, the ARC was a GASB-derived term, Government Accounting Standards Board, so they updated their terms there. So the funding policy is the first handout that, that was given to you, and it's three pages long. It, before I get into this, I kind of like to say it's really kind of in three sections. We're eighty percent funded right now as a pension plan, so between eighty percent and a hundred percent is section one, between a hundred perc, or a hundred percent and a hundred and ten percent is section two, and then everything at a hundred percent and ten percent or above, I'm going to kind of segment into the third section on how things are funded. So regarding that first piece, let's refer to the bottom of Appendix B, page one. There's some language that's highlighted in yellow there. This describes what happens when the pension is less than a hundred percent funded, in other words, right now. The language says, "The actuarially determined employer contribution rate shall be the greater of the employer normal cost rate, or the sum of the employer normal cost rate and the UAL contribution rate." That is kind of a more detailed, more descriptive way of saying what the Citizen Committee said in that the, they recommend the city should put in the greater of normal cost or the ARC, the ARC rate. So, so what that, what that language means is that from the current eighty percent until a hundred percent funding level, the city contribution shall be the ADEC rate, what was formerly known as the ARC. Second phase of the funding policy asks you to refer to, to page three, second paragraph, and this is, describes what happens when a hundred percent funding is attained. It says, "If the valuation," which is our terms for the actuary report, "if the valuation shows a surplus," in other words, a funded ratio that is above a hundred percent, "the prior amortization bases, all those unfunded amounts, those prior bases will be eliminated, and one base equal to the surplus will be established. The amortization period of a surplus shall be a twenty-year open period." So what we're doing there is saying that when we get at a hundred percent, the city contribution shall be normal cost only, because there isn't an unfunded accrued liability anymore. That even though there is a surplus, because we're probably not going to be exactly a hundred percent, that surplus isn't going to be used at that time to reduce the city's contribution. So at a hundred percent, the city will contribute normal cost. It's only till we get to Phase Three that we, we look at reducing normal cost a little bit less. So Phase Three is described, there's some language at the bottom of Appendix B, page one. This says what happens when we get to a hundred and ten percent. That hundred and ten percent needs to be attained for three years in a row. Says, "A negative amortization payment shall only be applied if the plan has been at least one hundred and ten percent funded for the current and prior two years." So this, basically, it means that the city's contribution at that point shall be normal cost, less, and, and amount equal to the surplus amortized over twenty years. So it's basically like getting a credit. We're going to put in a little bit less than normal cost once we get to a hundred and ten percent and have been there for three years. There's notes here that this will only occur if the plan sustains the hundred and ten percent funding level for three years. So let's say at some point we get to a hundred and ten, we put in a little bit less than normal cost, next year, the, the planned funding is measured in a hundred and nine percent. So now, now the, the different rules go into effect, where now we're putting in full normal cost again, and then we have to get to a hundred and ten percent for three years in a row before the city starts taking credit for the excess funding and amortizing that over a twenty-year period. So the hundred and ten percent is, is basically is seen as a cap that is to be hovered around should that level get there. That would be the end of my discussions, if there's any questions.
In summary, before we get to questions, we would just add that we think this is a very responsible policy to move us forward. This is funding for the current benefits for the men and women that we have hired today, that we've pledged these benefits to. So we, we feel that this is a very responsible position that moves us forward from the previous policy that we had. But again, Paul and I are here to answer questions, as are our actuaries as well.
Okay, Roy then Cindy, and then John.
So, we've got these two different amounts, the normal cost and the AR, the ARC, or what's the new term?
ADEC.
ADEC, I'll try to remember that. So we've got the ADEC and the normal cost. For this year, did we contribute the higher of those two?
For this coming budget year, we are contributing an amount that is between those two. We are seeking to contribute at the higher amount. Right now, I, I think it's scheduled at seven-point-nine million.
I believe that's correct.
And the higher amount would require eight-point-one million.
So the difference is two-hundred-thousand-dollar difference?
Correct.
Okay, is that, would you say that's typical? Looking back, historically, if we're looking back and if we've been doing this for years, would that be typical?
I would say that it's, I don't want to say typical, but I would say that when, when you're doing a, a projection of this magnitude, you're not going to be exactly right, so there's going to be some adjustment from year to year. Two-hundred thousand isn't, I guess, an unreasonable amount to have as, as a year-to-year adjustment based upon how the actuarial value of assets changes on a market value basis compared to the seven-and-a-half percent return assumption that these projections are based upon. So if, if the assets do better than seven-and-a-half, next year's ADEC number will be lower than what we're currently projecting for it. If, if the returns are less than seven-and-a-half, then next year's number is going to be a little bit higher than what are currently projected, because the projected numbers assume a seven-and-a-half percent return rate.
Before we move to Cindy, can you just clarify which fiscal year you're talking about? Is it seventeen eighteen?
I'm talking about seventeen eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Cindy?
Yeah, I'll defer to John first. That's, I was pointing to John when you called on me.
Oh, thank you, appreciate your presentation.
I do have the budget requests for the five-year period, if you'd like to see those.
Okay. Couple of questions. Were you under a hundred percent, and because we started this declining amortization of past service liability, or whatever terms you want to use there, but two years ago it was a thirty-year, and then we're now stepping it down year by year, so this year will be twenty-eight-year amortization?
Correct.
Will that continue to be stepped down each year?
Yes.
So what happens when that, let's theoretically say the assumptions are pretty much on, and the investments and so forth, the investments match the assumptions, you get down to zero?
When we get down to zero, that means we would be a hundred percent funded, that means we would, the city would just contribute normal cost.
Okay. What about new members that come on that have some slight past service, because they don't enter the plan on the date of employment, but usually you do it at their entry age normal?
Oh, like if, if they come on, we, we do the valuation in, you know, August thirty-one of every year, if they come on in January, then the, the seven months of service that they've provided by August thirty-one would be included in the eight-thirty-one valuation.
So that would be at the current years of amortization? It wouldn't go to thirty years, it would be at like twenty-eight or?
The, the current fifty-million dollars that I mentioned originally, that one is a tranche, if you will, that is going to be amortized down over twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, gradually down to zero. Any new year-to-year differences will be considered as their own individual yearly tranche. So with this policy, if there is a difference that occurs in fiscal years sixteen, seventeen, from what was expected, that year's difference, be it surplus or not, will be amortized over a separate twenty-year tranche. So we're going to have the, the original fifty million decreasing over the next twenty-eight years, but then each subsequent year will have its own individual tranche, and those individual tranches will be amortized over a twenty-year period.
What's a synonym for tranche? And how do you spell tranche?
I, I don't know. Just a, a bucket, an accounting bucket, a year's worth of.
Segment.
Experience.
Segment.
Segment.
Okay, I just want to make sure we and our listeners, viewers are on the same wavelength. We did the, we had a change this year with the, what had been that thirteenth check pool, and that had twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars. We took the constraints off of it, and that's what allowed us to go from a hundred-plus million deficit, unfunded liability, to about, I think it's really fifty-four million.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Fifty-four million. But we still maintain that we're going to pay those thirteenth checks under that formula.
Yes.
What does that do to the funding?
Well, it did a couple things. There was approximately twenty-seven million dollars in the separate thirteenth check pool. That twenty-seven million was added to the base benefits. The amount of liability, as you said, to make the future thirteenth check payments was, did not eat up the entire twenty-seven million, it was approximately half of that amount. So one thing it did was add to the funding, the positive funding of the pension by the tune of about thirteen million dollars. The second thing it did was to eliminate the practice of The second thing it did was to eliminate the practice of having to contribute new money when the, when the market values returns were above seven and a half percent to the thirteen check fund. So you'll probably remember, we were able to revert back to the seven and a half percent return rate that was used before the adjustment was made to accommodate for the, the skimming or the sharing money into the thirteen check fund. And that, that reversion from six point seven five percent as an assumed rate to seven and a half percent as an assumed rate for the entire pension plan, plan assets, all of those things in combination are what made the changes, as you said, from one hundred and three million to fifty-four million dollars underfunded. So.
Okay. So with the raising to the seven and a half percent investment return assumption, or interest assumption in the plan, and let's say this next year, you're, you're assuming that's seven and a half percent, but it comes in at five percent, so you've got a couple hundred million dollars that you're trying to earn that on, so that's going to be four or five million or more, lower than you wanted it. Did I understand you correctly say that four or five, let's, let's say five million dollar deficit, just for clarity, do we put that into its separate twenty-year segment?
Yes.
Tranche, whatever word?
Yes, and in fact, there's a little bit more detail to that, because as the council knows, we use a, a five-year smoothing method. So there will be the five-year smoothing that will mitigate the, or I should say, make the recognition of that amount a more gradual aspect. So there'll be a tranche or a segment, but that tranche in the first year will only be a fifth of the difference. And then next year's tranche will recognize another fifth.
So we'll start new five-year smoothings for each of those tranches?
Yes. Just, just like now, we have a five-year smoothing, and we compare the, the actual experience with the actuarially expected experience. The difference between those two experience amounts is what would go into the, the tranche or the segment that would be amortized over twenty years.
So when you get to the bottom line here, we had a number of recommendations from the Pension Review Committee that Trent had shared, and I guess there are two things out of that, that are two-part question here. One is, why didn't we bring forward some of the other recommendations? And secondly, by only bringing this recommendation forward, and the way it's structured, are we not giving up a lot of flexibility? Or maybe I can make two separate questions. One, why didn't we bring the others' recommendations forward, or some of them anyway? And secondly, does this funding policy take away a lot of the flexibility that the city previously had in making contributions?
I think to, to bring some of those other recommendations forward require negotiations with the unions impacted. A lot of those were regarding benefits, and, and those all require, those are mandatory subjects of bargaining. So those have to be accomplished at the negotiations table before they can be brought to council. And, and so those are some, some of the reasons there. Your second question, John, does it take away some of the flexibility? In part, maybe it does, and, and maybe it should. Because, as I said earlier, these are the benefits that we've already pledged to these employees, and they should be funded first, because that's what our commitment and obligation is. Not with those dollars that we have left, should we then put into the pension. But first and foremost, this is what we pledge to our employees, and this is what we should do in terms of our fiscal, you know, management of this pension plan. So, as I said earlier, these are the benefits we pledge for these employees who are working today that need to be funded.
Well, I appreciate that statement. I really like that carving granite, because I think I've been professing that for sixteen or eighteen years. So I'm glad to see that. I am concerned that a degree of flexibility would be taken away if we really had a challenging investment climate or economic downturn. But let's say we do have a bad downturn, we have this policy, we now put this ahead in the priority list, which it should be. Is the administration pledging to then look elsewhere to make cuts to meet those economic challenges?
Well, before I answer for the administration, I'll first say that, keep in mind that if we have a downturn, as Paul indicated, we have a five-year smoothing approach. So any sort of downturn would be mitigated by that five-year smoothing. We wouldn't feel the full impact in one year, right? But we understand what you're saying. I'll defer to Mr. Hoppe, but I think by, by bringing this policy forward from this administration, this administration is committed to funding this pension plan to the best of our ability. Yet there's also tremendous needs throughout all the infrastructure for funding. So it's the competition for the tax dollar, and I think we're doing our very best to make sure that we take care of our employees in this, with this benefit.
I agree with that statement. I just have a, a concern that this could be used down the road if there's some economic challenges, and a seven and a half percent investment return is, is fairly strong in this current climate, but that that could be used as a way to say, well, we've got to raise taxes, without being, taking some prudent fiscal management.
Well.
And that's probably more of a.
Yeah, I'm not here to speak about taxes. I'm here to speak about funding a pension plan for our employees, so I guess I'll defer to, you know, mayor's office on that, or any other, you know, entity. But my goal is to do our very best to fund this pension plan, as I've said, and I'm repeating myself, this is an obligation we've made to our employees. When we hire them, we say, here's what your benefits will be, and here's what our obligation is, is the city to fund that.
And I, I think we as elected officials have abrogated that responsibility in past years, because it seemed like everything else, the budget was balanced, and what was left went into the pension plan, and as a result, we've, along with economic downturns, have created this challenge. Thank you.
Trent?
So I, I served on that pension committee, and I was pleased that you guys supported those efforts with providing us knowledge. One of the things that stuck out to me in the pension report was that nineteen out of the last twenty-six years, the city has failed to make its obligation to the pension plan. Is that correct?
Um, I believe so. That's, that was in the pension report.
And since nineteen ninety, the city has contributed seven million, approximately seven million less than the recommended contributions. And that has a pretty big ripple effect in funding this plan over a period of time, correct?
Correct.
Explain that a little bit.
Um, well, let's say we have seven million dollars in the plan, and we earn five percent on it. And that's, that's that much more money in the plan that won't be have, have to be contributed as tax dollars. And that's that much more money that will be there next year to be compounded with next year's earnings.
So when we don't make our pension payment, we borrow against that at a seven and a half percent interest rate over the, over the amortization period, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm glad that there were comments made on what the, the changes that we have made previously. I think the thirteenth check move really put this plan back on track and, and made it so that our, our fiscal cliff of making that pension payment was a little bit lighter. Do you remember what the pension payment would have been this year, had we not made that change?
In excess of twelve million dollars.
So there's a six million dollar delta between what we paid this year and, or four million dollar delta, I'm sorry.
Four million. Roughly four million, yes.
Sorry, guys. And these really are the only two changes right now that we could make legislatively, other than going and negotiating with our public safety unions?
It's my recollection. I don't have all those recommendations in front of me. I wasn't prepared to address those, but yes, I mean, we're looking at these, you know, systematically, and if there's other changes we can make, we will, but many of those need to be changed at the negotiation.
I guess we, we could have dropped, dropped the drop plan, but that wouldn't have resulted in any significant savings.
We didn't see that as a significant change necessarily.
It was like maybe six hundred thousand dollars over a term of thirty years.
That's correct.
Is there anything else that we're missing with this ordinance, something that we would need to include?
I don't believe so. I mean, we've, we've talked about this, and we've looked at it, and we've made many changes. Again, we've invoked the advice of our actuaries who, who do this professionally. We, we've listened to citizens who've given input, we've, we've discussed it amongst ourselves with finances, we've discussed it with you, we've discussed it with the unions. So I think we've covered things to the best of our ability. We, we think it's, it's a step that moves us in the right direction for what we have today in terms of a plan design.
And having an actuarially determined contribution is nothing that's out of the ordinary. If you go and look at the pension report, Exhibit Seven, Page One, I mean, there's at least five or six plans that are on here that include actuarially determined pension plans, so that's, that's something that's not out of the ordinary for a city of our size. All right, thank you.
Jane? I know Trent had mentioned some of the other possibilities or recommendations from the Pension Review Committee. So for example, if we wanted to raise the retirement age, is that an item that was recommended in the Pension Review Report? Is that subject to the union negotiations?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Cindy?
Thank you. I just want to follow up a little bit on what Councilman Camp was talking about, because the, the first thought that occurred to me is what would have happened when we had the economic downturn of two thousand and eight? What would have happened in the years following that with regard to the pension plan, had we had this ordinance in place? Have you contemplated that, or could you explain?
Paul, why don't you speak to the sensitivity analysis a little bit, maybe, if you're going to?
The five-year smoothing would have taken into effect. So the losses that were incurred in the two thousand eight would have been recognized gradually over the course of the next five years, if this plan were to have been in effect at that time. Every year when twenty percent of those losses were recognized, they would have been, then put on an amortization schedule to be paid off over the coming twenty years. I think the financial impact, and of course, you know, we, we changed the amortization period to be the maximum back then of thirty years open. There would be slightly more pressure for the city to contribute at, at a slightly higher amount than what happened. And that was part of the criticism, really, of the Citizen Review Committee, was that the, the city should have put in a little bit more and acted a little bit sooner after the two thousand eight occurrence. So if that happens again, I think any kind of criticism in that regard would be mitigated by this policy.
In the report that Councilman Phillips was talking about, where nineteen out of twenty-six years, it wasn't. We didn't meet our obligation, and my understanding is that all but eight of those years, it was a hundred percent funded. Do you know which years that it wasn't?
I have a handout. Let's see.
I have enough copies.
Keep a copy for Doug and I.
I have a copy.
What's being distributed now is a, a handout with evaluation data of a detailed nature from nineteen ninety-one up through two thousand sixteen.
I'm sorry.
It's a handout that has detailed valuation data from nineteen ninety-one through two thousand sixteen. I would have to go through and add things up, but it definitely has all the answers to your questions on there. You can see the evaluation date is the first column, the funded status is the next column. So in nineteen ninety-one, for example, the plan was a hundred and sixteen percent funded.
Gotcha.
It looks like it maxed out at one twenty-eight. There's a, a liability amount, asset amount, and the next column is an unfunded amount, assumed rate of return, market rate. The last two columns, I think, speak to what your question is in, in terms of the employer contributions that are actuarially recommended versus the money that was actually contributed.
Okay, and then it looks like from this, I'm looking at the left-hand column, the valuation dates, August thirty-first, always the end of the fiscal, and it looks like it was pretty, pretty much ninety-five to a hundred percent up until two thousand ten?
Well, and that's, that's the five-year smoothing kicking in.
Right. And so is, does, do these figures, would I be right, that these, the figures, two thousand nine, or two thousand ten, right through two thousand sixteen, in fact, these, or at least those first few years, are what would hap, would answer my question of what would have happened if this were in place in two thousand, and when we saw the economic downturn of two thousand eighteen?
Well, then you'd have to compare, it's, it's, it's kind of like actually comparing apples to oranges, because this, the, the, the way that the actuarial employer contributions were calculated on this piece of paper are not, one, as strong as what this funding policy would say should be calculated. In two thousand eight, as we discussed, the amortization period was changed to thirty years, and it was a thirty-year open period until two thousand sixteen. So the numbers that you're seeing here, they, we, we take the, the unfunded accrued liability and amortize them over thirty years, and then next year, we, we start over again at thirty years, and again, until we get to two thousand sixteen, and then we decided we needed to take more affirmative action on this.
I understand.
So, so this, this gives you a, a guideline, but I, I think I would have to defer and, and say that if you really want a, an accurate depiction of what the funding pressures would have been as of some date forward, under the new policy, I think we'd have to do a study and give you that answer that way.
Is it fair to say that the actuarial recommendations that are listed in the next last column would have been greater under this current policy that's?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then I just had a couple, just kind of precise questions, because that's what I do. So I'm looking at the ordinance, and I'm looking at just some of the changes that are made. I'm on, I think, page one, yeah. Page one, line fifteen, and clearly this was written some time ago, and it talked about that the, the contribution would be placed in the pension fund no later than the end of the fiscal year, in August thirty-first, two thousand twelve, which of course doesn't make sense for this. But I'm wondering, it just says now the end of the fiscal year, and so, do we have a fiscal beginning? In other words, I kind of expect, when I looked at it, would say that, that by the end of each fiscal year, beginning fiscal year two thousand eighteen, or something of that nature, or beginning on August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. So is there in, any beginning date? Did I just miss that, or is that, is that in here somewhere, and I'm just not seeing it, because I'm looking at this section?
You didn't miss anything.
Okay.
And the two thousand twelve data, I mean, that, that date is an old date, and that's why it was taken out. The idea is that by the end of the fiscal year, so if this passes, the end of the fiscal year that we're talking about will be the end of the.
August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
This, this current fiscal year.
The end of seventeen eighteen?
I believe it would be.
We're in, well, well, we're now in sixteen seventeen.
Right.
We want, we, we might just want to make that more clear for ourselves, maybe even.
Certainly can.
Yeah. So my understanding is that this, that the contribution will be made no later than the August thirty-first of the fiscal year in question. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And so maybe we can talk about that between now and a voting session?
Can, yeah.
Okay. My, my second question was having to do with the line beginning at, at number eleven, I'm sorry, line eleven, the annual contribution determined pursuant to the funding policy detailed, and then, I'm sorry, that's not what I was looking at at all. I apologize. Page two, line two and three. Page two, line two and three. As I read that, I knew that was what I was looking at. Page two, line two and three, it does change the language of what the computation shall be, and it says, instead of the table in 1971, it says actuarial assumed earnings rate. Can you tell me what impact that difference has on the ordinance?
This was changed because the funding policy and as you experienced, some mortality tables get reviewed when the pension plan works with its actuary and does an experience study once every five years. And the
So that was based on mortality tables back in 1971?
Yeah, the 1971 table is outdated. We're currently using a year 2000 table. And then the assumed, the interest rate of 6%, that was eliminated to defer to the policy 7.5%.
Okay. And wasn't that changed at some point in the recent past?
Yes, and we did an experience study, and I think that was two years ago, we did the experience study, or was it just last year? I've lost track of time, Paul.
Yes, the
There were implications to the plan funding at that point. You are correct.
Okay. And on what basis does that get changed?
Once every five years, we work with the actuary to do something called an experience study, where they compare our actual experience to the assumptions that they have in place. And they say, okay, well, this assumption is correct, maybe this one needs to be updated. And one of the things that was updated in the 2014 experience study was the mortality table was actually changed, I believe. Well, I've got a lot listed here. Before it was, okay, until, the 1971 group mortality table became effective August 31st. On 8/31/16, a study was done so that we used the 1971 group mortality table projected to 2000, set back zero years for men, five for women. In 8/31/13, the mortality table was changed again to be the 1994 group mortality table, set forward two years for men, one for females. On 8/31/14, the mortality table was changed to be a table called RP 2000 with a generational mortality improvement using scale double A. So you can see by having it written in the ordinance is not a good idea in terms of allowing the flexibility that's necessary to make changes to
We're going to go with the more current mortality table, whatever's the most current at any given time.
Not actually, sorry, but not the most current, but the most appropriate for use with our demographic.
Okay. And then the assumed earnings, does this body have the authority to change what we want to assume is earnings?
Not to my knowledge. That is something that the plan administrator has control over, and it isn't as if the plan administrator, in a vacuum, once again, sets that kind of number. We work with a professional investment advisor who looks at our portfolio every year, and actually, in May, they're going to do another evaluation, an asset allocation study, where they're going to evaluate, kind of like the actuary, if the numbers are working out as we expected, and if not, perhaps make some changes. And then, based upon the asset allocation to equities and stocks and bonds and our different asset classes, and the probabilities of achieving X returns within those asset classes, they will tell us what a reasonable 20-year long-term return expectation would be, and that's where the 7.5 comes from. And we look at that every year to see if that's valid or not.
Thank you very much. Jane?
I just have a question for you on the recent handout. I quickly tallied up all the funded status, the percentage that we're funding our obligation, and it seems like 19 out of the 26 years shows that we, the funding ratio was actually at 95% or higher. And then, so that means that seven of those years, it was below 95% with the lowest happening in 2015 at 64%. And that's when we made the decision to merge that 13th paycheck. So how do we compare as a municipality to other jurisdictions in terms of the ratios that we have been funding historically since 1991?
I don't know that I'm capable of answering that, Jane. You know, our actuaries might be, but again, if you're asking how we compare it to funding status of other municipalities, you know, that would probably engage a fairly lengthy study and such to say, how are they funded? I think we're going in the right direction. We're not where we'd like to be, but you can say, well, Detroit is, you know, 20%. Omaha is maybe 60 or 70% after some changes and things like that. But our actuaries would have a more accurate count on that. But again, it's not necessarily apples to apples because you may be talking school districts, you may be talking state, you may be talking different municipalities and such, and different plan designs. We have to focus on what we're doing, and, you know, our goal is to be at 100% or higher, you know, and moving forward. So I don't think any of us are necessarily pleased that for those five years, we were below 100%, but I think we want to take every step possible to move it higher.
I think I could use our former colleague, Councilman Cook, who made this statement. Lincoln is bleeding, but not bleeding as much as other jurisdictions, and that'll save you a lot of fees.
I think, actually, that Omaha is funded only at 52%.
Yeah. I mean, I
And so I
I can't keep track of each municipality, to be honest, and I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can with ours, so.
And I would probably ask our actuaries that are here present, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, you might be able to answer this, but certainly, when we get our AAA bond rating, I'm guessing that they may look at our pension liability and the unfunded liability and our funding ratios that we currently have
Don't guess.
No, don't guess.
Under the new Gatsby rules, they absolutely do.
Okay.
Under the new Gatsby rules, it absolutely impacts our balance sheet and our bond rating, so.
Carl?
Thank you. And thanks, Paul, for this last sheet that you handed out. I'm not an actuarial, so I want to ask some questions here. I'm looking at the last column, the last two columns, the employer contributions. And so the actuarial column, would that be what would be recommended that the city put in, or explain what that column means?
Okay. The actuarial column is recommended, and in terms of timing is where things get, I guess, you have to think a little bit. So, for example, I mean, I'm looking at the last line, 8/31/16, it says actuarial $9.5 million. That $9.5 million was, and perhaps, maybe this is something that if I misspeak, Pat can help me out, but it's a number that was created on the 8/31/16 valuation date with the assumptions in effect at that time. So I guess I'd have to look at that. I don't know, Pat, can you help me out with this? Explaining the date question, I mean, what we're doing right now is using the 8/16 valuation to set the 1718 payroll numbers. Hate to put you on the spot like this.
That's okay. What's the question?
Can you explain the source of these numbers and how they're used is the question?
Could you just mention your name and address, please? Thank you.
Certainly. Patrice Beckham, Cavanaugh, McDonald, 3906 Rayner Parkway, Bellevue, Nebraska, actuary for the city. The actuarial contribution rate is, in fact, the, probably what you're used to hearing as the recommended contribution. It's essentially based on the funding policy that was in place at that point in time. What Paul's kind of alluding to is, in real time, there has to be a lag between the valuation date and the budgeted amount because it takes time to do the valuation, and you're not going to change a budget in the current year. So there is a projection from the valuation to the date the money's expected to be contributed to come up with that dollar amount. But I think in this very simplistic viewpoint, actuarial is based on your funding policy, how much should go in, how much should be contributed. And the column to the right is, of course, the actual dollars that went in for each of those fiscal years.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And so, I guess, just in observations then of where the actual match up with the actuarial, the 18 or 19 of the 26 years, we, the city actually put in less than what was recommended. And that decision, over time, has resulted in the, you know, significant increase of what is owed or why we're behind in our funding of the whole pension.
Certainly, to the extent contributions have not gone in, the funding of the system is affected, but I wouldn't underestimate the impact of the financial crisis, which is still relatively recent in the history of the life of the plan
Right.
and the impact that that has had on funding. And we're basically trying to
Correct.
dig out of a hole over a 30-year period. It's just going to take a lot of time before that impact is negated by additional contributions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Jane?
This question is for Pat. Pat, since this is a best practice to implement something like what we're discussing today, how many of the other plans that you review and evaluate, do they have this type of formula in place? All of them or most of them, some of them, one of them?
Most plans have a formal funding policy. The few that do not are working on those as we speak. So the policy's basically kind of the actuarial cost method, that entryage normal that we've talked to you about before, how the assets are going to be calculated for evaluation purposes, which reflects that asset smoothing method that Paul talked about, and then the amortization policy. And the first two are pretty common among other public plans. Very, you know, what you're using is very standard. Amortization policy varies by system because there's a lot of variance in the funded ratios of systems and the budget situation for different entities. What you're doing, though, with the, as Paul calls them, the tranches, I call them layers because I'm not that fancy, but that approach is becoming very popular because it does away with that cliff at the end of the amortization period. So it's going to kind of mitigate the paying a high contribution and having it drop to nothing because all that experience in the next 28 years for you guys will be set up over new bases that are amortized and spread out over a longer period of time. So that's becoming very common for public plans. The recommendation from the Conference of Consulting Actuaries, who issued a white paper on best practices for pension, public pension plans, and the GFOA also issued guidance, and that shorter amortization period for the new pieces at 20 years is right in line with those recommendations. So I think you guys are very much mainstream, following best practices, and, you know, kind of putting that on record to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question for you as well. You mentioned a lag time between when you do the actuarial recommended contribution and then what is actually put in our budget. Budgets are dynamic entities. They are moving targets. But to the extent that we could reduce that lag time, could we be better at doing our pension contribution? Do you have any recommendations for the city about how to reduce that lag time? Is there something that you see in other cities that would potentially help us here in Lincoln to help mitigate any inefficiency or to help increase the precision of our contribution?
It's very, very common for there to be a lag. And, you know, Lincoln has a one-year lag. So we do the 8/31/16 valuation to set the contribution for 1718. That's the most common. It's very unusual to do a valuation. Remember, we won't have numbers to the city until the end of the year, so end of December first to January. So it's pretty unusual to sort of do it in real time. Do have some smaller utility plans that are able to do that, and if you wanted to, you could accelerate, reflected in the current year, but that is really not as common. I would say as long as you consistently put the money in, whether the subsequent valuation says more or less, if you always follow and put that amount in, over the long run, it works out. There isn't a bias one way or another. Where I've seen problems is where, you know, there's a number out there that says you should contribute 8 million, and the next valuation says you only need 7, and then you go, oh, well, we'll just use the 7 million instead of the 8. If you don't follow that practice, I think you're fine.
Okay. Thank you. And then Doug, I had a question for you because when the concern John raised about interest rate assumption and how good it is, both in the pre-council we had and just I heard you say sensitivity analysis, is that what Paul was describing is when he was trying to explain the smoothing over five years? Is that part of the sensitivity analysis? Or is the sensitivity analysis another step you've taken to try to ensure that our assumption is as good as it can be?
Thank you. The sensitivity analysis relates to the funding, where we looked at what happens, what would be the worst-case scenario if we didn't make our 7.5%? And then what would be the best-case scenario if we exceeded it? And we looked at that in terms of portions, and so we could see what our liability looked like if we fell short and say, and I don't have the sensitive analysis directly in front of me, but what happens if we made 6.5%? You know, what would our pension obligation be at that point? And our actuaries did that sensitivity analysis for us. Paul can probably speak to it in greater detail because this is what he loves to pour over at 10 o'clock at night when he can't sleep, so.
Well, I guess if you could just put in layman's terms for us how it helps to have that done.
It gave us the reassurance and said, basically, what is our, what's our liability? You know, and what's, and what is on the end of it? You know, if we exceed 7.5%, what's that look like? If you're asking from a standpoint of the pension administrator, why we set 7.5%, you know, that's what we do with our investment advisor and looking at this in a long-term sense and saying, how achievable is 7.5% over the long-term analysis? And that's what we go through internally to look at. Are we still being reasonable in terms of that? And again, it varies by municipality. Some municipalities have an 8% assumption rate, you know, some have 7.25. You know, we have landed on 7.5% because our investment advisor has said that that's achievable if we make these sort of changes with our asset allocations. And I think we're on par for that.
When you say these sorts of changes, does it mean the entire package of changes in the, from the Pension Review Committee or just these that we're contemplating?
Changes in terms of asset allocations, where we make our investments.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
I did bring a sample of a sensitivity analysis. I saved one for myself, of course.
You can keep it and talk to it. Because when they look at it, they'll understand.
I handed out a sample that was prepared by our actuaries that shows, in yellow highlight there, what if, instead of earning 7.5% in fiscal 2016, 0% were earned? The column on the right is the difference. So this is an illustration of if we don't earn anything this fiscal year, how the demands would increase over the 25 years, because we take the money and spread it over a five-year smoothing period and then amortize each of those over a 20-year period.
Could you walk us through what you want us to understand from this chart? That might be helpful.
Well, if 0% were earned on assets in 2016-17.
Only, correct?
Only.
Okay.
And after that, 7.5% were earned consistently. And after that, seven and a half percent were earned consistently. Based upon a comparison, there's a, there's a baseline number, column nine, that says that assumes seven and a half every year. The alternate is the column that says, what if we earned zero percent in sixteen, seventeen? The difference column would be the amount of additional contributions that would be necessary in order to make up for that zero percent in sixteen, seventeen.
What I would give to you, what I want you to take away from this is the fact, in layman's terms, is that we who are charged with coming up with policy and funding decisions to present to you have done our due diligence in looking at this very, very carefully and doing an analysis as to what would happen if we didn't make our projected earnings? Or what would happen if we exceeded our projected earnings? So again, for you and for us, it's a due diligence that says we've studied this very, very carefully to make sure that we're presenting you with the correct funding policy that is good for both our employees and for the city.
Well, I don't want to speak for John, but I thought maybe his concern and one that I think we share is how, I mean, not that we would expect it to go to zero, but what if it's more realistically six? And so I'm not sure how this analysis helps, other than I think it says that over the long term, between now and two thousand forty-four, there'd be an extra forty-two million that we would need to pay as a result of just having one year of no investment return? Is that what this chart says? So how does that address the maybe less severe change? I mean.
This is, this is a scalable number, as I understand it. And so if zero percent results in these numbers, if we earn three and a, or three-point-seven-five percent instead of seven, we can take all of these numbers and divide them by two.
That's just for one year.
Right. Does that make sense? That's, it's, so we don't have examples for every percentage, but it's a scalable amount.
Would that apply to the thirteenth check fund, too, that we moved over? The projections you have on that at seven and a half percent forever? So you got that thirteen million divided fifty-something?
The thirteenth check is now rolled into this sensitivity analysis, so yes.
Would it be fair to say, if we look here in recent history, that two thousand nine, as we've acknowledged, there was a change in the plan through the administration that went from a ten-year amortization of the past service liability, the unfunded liability, actuarial liability, to thirty years? Which basically cut the contribution amount in half. It's, it's like a home mortgage. If you have a ten-year mortgage versus thirty-year, if you looked at your monthly payment of principal and interest, the ten-year would probably be about twice what the thirty-year is. So we did that in two thousand nine. And so as these numbers that we looked at on the first exhibit you handed out would have been dramatically worse if we hadn't done that. And then secondly, we went to an extra twenty-five percent smoothing from four to five years. So we also pushed out the two years of investment declines. And now, this last year, we absorbed the thirteenth check. That took, these were cushions that we had in the plan. And we've removed the ten-year to thirty-year amortization, the thirty-year to ten, ten to thirty, removed a huge cushion we have. And that's what I always worked with when I was establishing defined benefit plans, doing the smoothing, took further cushion out. Now the thirteenth check is an additional cushion. And finally, going then to the mandated here, we've come from the ability for the city, should it need to, where there's some challenges, it's, it's been drastically minimized. Now, that doesn't take away, and I agree a hundred percent with Mr. McDaniel's, that the pension is one of our top priorities. I mean, period. It's, it's number one, and I professed that during my whole career here on the council. And that's where we, in the political environment, have not met our obligations. We, we just didn't fund it where it should have been. But by making these three moves and now this fourth, we've taken out a lot of flexibility that does concern me, that if we just really had a calamity, we are locking ourselves in. And I, I think, maybe it's, as I evaluate this legislation, I'm just, I'm hesitating a little bit, thinking that, you know, in life, we all, we as human beings like to have some flexibility and so, but I, I like to go on that schedule of what this legislation professes because I think that's the right thing to do. It's just what if we have an unforeseen calamity? We won't have the flexibility then.
There's a, we, we've spoken about generational equity before. And while that doesn't really help with your, how to handle a calamity and the flexibility, it does kind of come into play in terms of what this policy addresses and best practices in that the people that are receiving the services pay for those same services. So if we, you know, push the cost of today's services ahead, we're, we're getting further away from generational equity.
I want to go back to my question, sorry. And Doug, maybe you can help me with this. If this, if the sensitivity analysis is supposed to help us address the question of what happens if the plan earns less than seven and a half percent? But the sensitivity analysis is zeroing it out for one year and going right back to seven-point-five percent and every year after that? How is it useful? You said it's scalable, but how is it useful if, in fact, maybe the seven-point-five percent assumption is wrong? Or is there different analysis the actuary has done that gives you confidence that the seven-point-five percent is right? In which case, why do this?
Long-term.
You follow me? You follows me?
Yeah, that, that's actually a very good question. And the answer is, long-term. That's what the seven and a half percent is designed to do, is to, to be a long-term expectation. We're never going to be probably at seven and a half. We're going to be above it. We're going to be below it. And that's what this illustrates, is that one year below, maybe next year it'll be above. So the usefulness is, I think, there in terms of looking at the short-term impact or pressures that could come from earning less. But as you said, if we expect seven and a half percent long-term, we shouldn't really worry about the, the shorter-term fluctuations.
And then, just to reiterate, it sounds like you said earlier that every, maybe it was in the pre-council or maybe it was today, that every five years, the policy is reviewed for any unnecessary updates. Is that correct?
On an actuarial basis, it's reviewed in terms of comparing the assumptions to experience. On a, we have a separate review with our financial advisor that occurs every year in terms of assessing if we're holding or working towards the optimal portfolio in terms of risk and return.
But in terms of section five, funding policy review, in the appendix B of what we were actually holding public hearing on today?
That is, that refers to the experience study every.
Right.
We used to do it every five.
Okay.
Yes.
Not, but, it says, but not less frequently than every five years. Okay.
That's not the funding policy, but the experience, those assumptions we make to put into the plan, such as the census tables, what the rate of return should be, so on and so forth.
I think the idea is that when we do the, the experience study, that'll be our cue to look at this funding policy also.
Well, that's what I always, I wanted to confirm because it sounds like what it's saying is that this funding policy that we're discussing today is what will be also reviewed and amended as necessary by the plan administrator, not less frequently than every five years following the experience study.
Correct.
Okay. So there's some room for tweaking it, it sounds like, in the future, as needed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a, it's a moving target.
Any further questions from the council?
Is everyone behind me fast asleep?
Yes.
Nobody's behind you.
Thank you.
But we live and breathe. Thank you very much.
This time, I'd invite anyone else who'd like to speak to this item to come forward.
Deb Andrews, twelve thirty-five A Street. I oppose the proposed ordinance to fund the police and fire pension plan at a hundred and ten percent, as recommended by an actuarial firm. We can't afford it. Currently, the city falls short of funding basic services, park maintenance, snow removal, public transportation, street maintenance, to name a few. The city budget situation was so dire last year, the mayor sued the council to raise taxes. Perhaps whoever drafted this ordinance is unfamiliar with Lincoln's finances. The police and fire pension plan elevates those departments above other city employees who have a defined contribution plan. I want to put this on the. The income in Lincoln is up just ten percent in ten years. Poverty has increased forty-eight percent in those same ten years. Our bonded indebtedness that we vote on is up a hundred and eighteen percent. The certificate of participation bonds that we don't have a vote on is up two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six percent in fifteen years. The city has been forced to borrow forty-two million dollars in COPS bonds to fund city services. From nineteen sixty-eight to two thousand fifteen, Nebraska's population has increased twenty-nine percent, while tax collections are up six hundred and forty-three percent, adjusted for inflation, during that same period of time. Since two thousand ten, fifteen sanitary and improvement districts in Nebraska have filed for bankruptcy. Will that be our future? The spending course we are on is not sustainable. Many council members are aligned with the union. All unions are interconnected and they're international. Twenty years ago, union leadership took the anti-communist clause out of the union constitution by unanimous vote. It is more transparent to describe those elected officials as aligned with the communist-led union. People sincerely concerned about safety need look no further than learning failure in schools. I have another one. Just forty percent of Nebraska students are proficient at reading. For blacks, just twenty-two percent score proficient at reading. How will they support themselves? In math, it's a little bit better. Forty-six percent of Nebraska students are proficient at math. But just twelve percent of black students are proficient at math. There's nothing wrong with our students. The problem lies in curriculum and instruction. The teachers' union is the largest in the nation. All ignore learning failure. Learning failure is union success. The system expands. The LPS curriculum director, presiding over the largest number of failing schools in the state, just had a school named for her. Your vote, whether or not to support this ordinance to fund the pension at a hundred and ten percent, as ordered by an actuary, will inform Lincoln citizens who you represent, citizens or the communist-led union. For council members who support this ordinance, I recommend a book just published by the MIT Press, Communism for Kids: How Capitalism Makes People Suffer. The passage of this ordinance will accelerate Lincoln's trajectory of soaring debt and exploding poverty. And I have handouts. If you want to give each council member. Thank you. That's all.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? You could come on forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. We support this ordinance with reservations and recommendations for improving it. According to the report that was made about the pension fund, and I won't go over some that's already been said, but it's noted that since nineteen ninety, the city has contributed seven million less than the recommended contributions. The committee that studied this does not know for certain why. When the plan was fully funded or nearly funded, perhaps the elected officials felt they could contribute less than what was recommended. Certainly, it is a way to balance the city's budget in the short run. However, the reasons the city's pension contribution was, however, the reason, whatever the reasons, the city's pension contribution was shortchanged too often. The city does, none of this works. However, if the city does not make the recommended contributions year after year, if we can't afford it or we are unwilling to commit the resources to fund it properly, then the city's leaders must find a way to reduce the obligation. Not funding the city's obligation to the pension plan may also negatively impact, may also negatively impact, the city's credit racins, the city's credit ratings for the initial bonds, a needed funding source for many projects. And one thing, all sides agree, the city must fund its obligation, period. The standard expectation of a democratic government is safety obligation. And that is an established order to protect its citizens. Police and firefighters are on the front line to do this. And it is unconscionable not to support safety employees and which also is supported by the public, the number-one priority in Lincoln. The council to bring forth additional resolutions to this is that there be an addendum or some kind of reference that the city's leaders cannot play games with funding this. As the committee pointed out, they had the power to do that in the past, which led to the problem that we have right now. So we would like to see some recommendation, some addition, amendment, some inclusion in this resolution, that this could not happen in the future. And also, this was discussed, seven and a half percent is the consistent with the rate for many pension plans. So that's not out of line. However, when people are dealing with obligations such as the stock market, they have to recognize that what goes up must come down in bull and bear markets. And so this must be addressed also in order to make sure that you don't get in a hole. Prudent investors all have to do this, and it is no less the obligation of the city officials in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay. Seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, I'll call item twenty-nine, creating alley repaving district number fifty-one from Eighteenth Street to Antelope Valley Parkway between O and N Streets.
Hello, Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. Public Works has received a petition to create an alley paving district, as you see there, between O and N and 18th and Antelope Valley. Basically, this would repave about half an alley where we have some tranches, which is a combination of a pothole and a trench. And so this is something...
So we have potholes on our pension plan?
With that, I would...
We've done pretty well.
...answer any questions.
I think we need to change our vocabulary.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Someone who's been very patient.
That's okay, you have serious matters before you. Robert Duncan, 4801 North 7th Street. I'm a partner in Assam Blage, which backs up to this alley. The alleys...our portion of the alley is very old with bricks, and the drainage is poor, and it just needs to be replaced. And I've talked to the gentleman across the street from it, and he's okay with that. In fact, I think...I believe that everyone is okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next.
All right, next is item 30, text amendment 17003, amending Chapter 27.67 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parking by amending Section 27.67.030 to allow parking in the front yard in the R4, R5, R6, and R7 zoning districts when the property is used for single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, and townhouses, and to allow required parking spaces to be stacked, and repealing Section 27.67.030 as hitherto existing.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, also Jim Cristo, the applicant is here, in case you have any questions for him. This is pretty much a minor text amendment. Mr. Cristo came forward, he was looking to redevelop some property that is in the R5, R6, and R7 districts. And specifically, this was an item where he wanted to do either have two units attached to each other, or potentially three or four units attached to each other. And we realized our current code didn't allow for parking to be legally counted as part of the required parking if it was stacked behind a garage. It's something that's typically done in our R1 through our 4 districts. In reviewing it, we determined that it really made sense. We're in our multifamily districts, also encouraging townhomes or single-family attached housing. And so this is a relatively minor amendment that would allow us to count that in front of a garage. And that would allow Mr. Cristo to have some units that have a one-car garage and count as part of his required parking, people with a parking space behind the garage.
Any questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 31, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Kirk Havronik for the sale of city-owned properties generally located at 5122, 5132, and 5142 Betty Lou Boulevard.
David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case. It has a ring to it, doesn't it? Betty Lou Boulevard. This is the sale of three lots that the city originally bought for $10,000 from the developer in the Glen Oaks area. It was to allow the Glen Oaks area to proceed without doing a relatively costly linkage between the sewer...I'm sorry, make that the storm water in the area and the city's storm water system. What happened instead was that we took over the property, and we put in a box culvert high here, and the water essentially would come into those three lots. Now, that property is more valuable...
You want to put that back, and we didn't even get to see it projected. Thank you.
The box culvert is back in this area. That allowed the rest of the lots to be built without this relatively expensive proposition of making the linkage. And to do that, the developer sold back to the city these three lots for $10,000, and the lots were used to where the water went when it was storm water. Well, now, those are more valuable and are usable if you link the storm water system to the city's system, which is the plan for the developer. They'll do that at their expense, not the city's expense, so that cost doesn't come to us. But they have agreed to pay us $73,800 for these...essentially, these lots here. We paid $10,000, we sell them for $73,800. We don't pay the price to link it to these sewers, to the city's storm water system, and we get what in this area quite likely would be, let's say, three $250,000 homes built on this land that is otherwise unused. We now pay maintenance on the property because we mow it, and because it's been platted and has no civic purpose at the moment, it will be taxed this year unless we sell it. We'd like to sell the property.
Any questions? Carl.
This is unusual. Usually, when you come before us, it's the other way.
The other way around.
Yeah, so, thank you.
You must have read The Art of the Deal.
I just wish I could keep a share, you know, like a finder's fee, like 10%, but I can't. Goes to the advanced land acquisition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, I'll call items 32, 33, and 34 together. They are approving the Nature's Variety Phase 1 redevelopment agreement, the fiscal year 1617 CIP, to authorize and appropriate $275,000 in TIF funds, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds, all for property generally located at 311, 321, and 333 Southwest 32nd Street for the construction of an approximately 24,000-square-foot freeze-drying facility.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case. About five weeks ago, you would have seen this idea before you, because on March 27th, the council passed an amendment to the West O redevelopment plan. For this general project will be part of the plan overall. It was unanimous, as was the planning commission's vote of two weeks prior. Nature's Variety operates out of three locations in Lincoln. They want to be more effective and efficient to make sure that they are continuing to be a solid company with a bright future for the 120 employees that they have in Lincoln and the 150 employees that they have elsewhere throughout the country. They would like to build in this location a special freeze-drying facility that will improve, again, their efficiency. To support that, in addition to the existing employees, only between five and eight employees and an engineer at the location. It's a company that's been successful in the last recent years. It's quadrupled in size over the last eight years; they hope to double in the next four. This is the initial phase of their thinking. They're part of a corporate realignment that has their future mapped out, but this is the phase that they're currently involved with in Lincoln. It involves a $3 million investment in that facility, and the accompanying TIF is $275,000 that would be spent towards site acquisition. This elevates Lincoln, I think, inside the corporate structure of Nature's Variety. That's of value to us. The linkage originally came from the company to our economic development arm of the mayor's office, as they were looking for a place inside the company and various locations in which to make this investment. And in discussions with us, it was decided that Lincoln was the right place to do that. Tom Houston, the lawyer and a representative of Nature's Variety are here. They'll be happy to answer questions, and I would be happy to answer your questions as best I can as well.
All right, thank you.
And I'm Chair Members of the Council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Nature's Variety, with me today is Brett Holtz, who's a plant engineer of Nature's Variety. A little bit about the company first. They're a manufacturer of pet and animal food. They've been located in Lincoln for many, many years. Their headquarters is in St. Louis. They really had historically three operations that they'd like to consolidate at the Southwest 32nd Street site. They have been leasing the facility out on Southwest 32nd Street and have the opportunity to purchase that facility. The Phase 1 of this project is intended to be a 24,000-square-foot freeze-drying facility, as indicated by Director Landis. This is the existing facility that's occupied and leased, will be purchased. The new freeze-drying facility is located in the southern portion of that property. It's anticipated that the investment on this facility will be between 3.5 and 4 million dollars. Much of it is equipment-related, and obviously, as you're aware, equipment does not factor into our tax increment financing equation, but this site would create a potential 15 to 20 new jobs. It is anticipated, too, that there's a Phase 2 of the project that would be a cold storage facility, potentially within about three years, that would be filling in some of the gaps on this site plan. One thing about this site, the current building that they're occupying is approximately 40 feet below grade...not below grade, below the grade of O Street, so it's hard even to see from O Street as you drive past it. The redevelopment agreement that's in front of you does indicate that the tax increment financing has been sized at $275,000, which is relatively a modest size for tax increment financing, but it's based upon our projection of a 24,000-square-foot industrial building, utilizing the formulas used by the Lancaster County Assessor. And it's been our experience that that value comes in at approximately 50 to 60% of cost, and so we've tried to be very conservative in our calculations of this. It's anticipated that the building would commence construction at the end of May, if possible. If this matter is approved, it's approximately a six-to-eight-month construction cycle that would have the facility being open for operation early 2018. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and I would ask for your support for this project.
Any questions? Jane.
Tom, could you just review again what are some of the infrastructure improvements anticipated for the project besides the difference in the elevation?
I think as this Phase 1 project, it does not...we do not anticipate any infrastructure improvements exactly. The redevelopment agreement contemplates the use of the tax increment financing amount for site acquisition, which is clearly an eligible cost under the community development law. A Phase 3 project would definitely have infrastructure needs because of access issues on some of the targeted land, so that could be a question in five or six years, based on the schedule.
Thank you. Other questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Good afternoon, Marty Lee, Neighbor Works, Lincoln. And this is the first I've heard of the project, so I just have a couple of questions. One is with tax increment financing, I understand there's got to be an issue of blight, and I'm not that familiar with the area, but I would be interested in what that...how that fits into this. The other thing that I'm concerned about and would suggest even for future, when we're doing TIF projects in Lincoln, is that maybe a percentage, a small percentage of the TIF might go back towards the neighborhood for some improvements that are made in the area surrounding it. That's done in other parts of the country, and I'd really like us to start considering that maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, would you like to address the concern raised?
Sure. This site is located on West O Street at approximately Southwest 32nd Street. It's located in the West O redevelopment area that was declared a redevelopment area and blinded substandard back when the study was completed in 2006. The West O redevelopment area really starts at the bridge, West First Street extends all the way to Southwest Fortieth Street, and it's P Street on the north and the railroad tracks on the south, so it's a large corridor, a long corridor, that was declared by and substandard by this council's action back in 2006.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Tom? Okay, Jane.
Yeah, going back to Marty's suggestion, I know you're sort of the guru of tax increment financing. Do other municipalities designate a percentage of that towards the neighboring areas and improvements to those areas?
Not as such. I mean, some cities do charge a varying amount of a percentage of the tax increment financing sum for...it still has to be an eligible purpose, it still has to be an eligible use under the community development law for redevelopment improvements within that specific project area. I've seen that happen. But the percentage varies from city to city. The city of Lincoln has not done that to date. The city, what, three years ago, two years ago, implemented the 1% administrative fee to help cover the administrative costs, which a lot of cities do that.
Carl.
How about utilizing funds for low-income housing projects? I've heard some talk about something like that.
Certainly, it's off-topic, but I'm willing to talk about it. One of the challenges in using tax increment financing for affordable housing is it has...we have a different statute on valuation for low-income housing tax credit projects, and it has to be based upon actual income, not market rental income. So as long as the projections include the statutory valuation model, then yes, TIF can be used for affordable housing.
But not using...you've indicated that the TIF for this project has to stay on this site. You couldn't transfer it to another site for a different purpose.
The community development law allows the tax increment financing sum to be used within the redevelopment area. And this, as I mentioned, this redevelopment area is a wide or long corridor from the bridge out to Fortieth Street. Some cities do that. Some cities capture a mountain and use it for sidewalks elsewhere within the redevelopment area, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next then is item 35, text amendment 16020, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the zoning code by amending Section 27.62.100, subsection C, subsection 2, to modify the front and side yard setbacks for car sales and remove conditions that are no longer needed by amending Section 27.67.040 to create a new parking requirement for motorized vehicle sales for lots less than two acres, and repealing Sections 27.62.100, subsection C, subsection 2, and 27.67.040 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Is anyone here to...all right, great, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ryan Glenn of Hush Blackwell, 13330 California Street, Suite 200 in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the applicant who submitted the request for change in the Lincoln Municipal Code that's before you here today. And my client is A&amp;B Auto, which you're very likely familiar with, located approximately at 33rd and Cornhusker here in Lincoln. The text amendment that we have requested is in three parts, but the planning commission has recommended approval with respect to the parking amendment to reduce the required parking stalls for employees and customers to three spaces if your lot is in size of less than two acres. And so we are, of course, in support of their recommendation on that issue, and so I would rather focus my time with you here today on the other two remaining text amendments. The first one is with respect to the side yard reduction. In H2 and H3 zoning districts, we have proposed that the side yard be reduced to zero in order to allow for motor vehicle sales to occur in the side yard. The current restrictions provide that for properties like my client's property, the side yard area is 15 feet from the property line on the side of the individual's property. That has a tremendous impact on not only my client's property, but also several other business owners within the H2 and H3 zoning districts, some of whom are here with us this afternoon that also intend to speak before you on these two measures. The side yard issue, in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking at the comprehensive plan that has been submitted to the city of Lincoln to help, you know, beautify the area, it really does not have an impact on that comprehensive plan... that comprehensive plan as we have it proposed here today. And the reason I say that is because there's still, in the proposed text amendment on the side yard issue, there still remains an exclusion for if the H2 and H3 zoning district property is located next to a residential property, that does not apply. And so the current zoning restrictions for the fifteen feet would still remain in effect if the property was located next to a residential area. With respect to the front yard issue that we have submitted, that is a little bit more complicated. And so the way that we have proposed it as a text amendment is that for properties in the H2 and H3 zoning district, the front yard would be reduced to six feet from the property line. And with that six-foot barrier, we also have indicated that the design standards that are current with the city of Lincoln and certainly in conjunction and in support of the overall comprehensive plan to beautify the city of Lincoln, those design standards requiring landscaping as a buffer to the front yard for these H2 and H3 properties would apply. And so the properties in these zoning districts, including my client, would not be grandfathered and would agree to have the landscaping buffer and end up having a much better scenario than it currently exists today, in which there is a tremendous amount of noncompliance with the current zoning ordinances as they exist today. With respect to other options that may or may not be available to my client and others in this scenario, there really are none, because if we were to submit a, for example, a variance request with the zoning board, we would end up needing to prove a significant hardship in order to do that, and it's just not very likely that that would end up successful because of the nature of the size of the lot in comparison with the overall footprint of the building and the area surrounding it. But by having these reductions in the front yard and the side yard, my client would be able to, to further lay out his property in a better manner in order to remain consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Hello. My name is Jesse Abel, and I am a manager for Quality Motors.
Can you just state your address for the record, please, Mr. Abel? Thank you.
Fifty-four zero one Superior Street here in town, S. six eight five zero four for the zip code. I do actually support what she had just addressed with you folks. Just to kind of, I mean, it's, it's pretty self-aware, but I mean, most of these, myself included, these are local family-owned and operated businesses. And in order for us to be able to survive, we're going to have to have a way in order for us to display our nicer vehicles, obviously, because, you know, that's how we make our living. And on top of that, you know, the six-foot, it's going to be a hurt to the business. We understand that, but we can accept that. But with the fifteen-foot, that's literally going to kill the business, and it's not going to give us an opportunity to display the vehicles that we have, as well as that's going to make, I mean, we're going to have to dramatically drop lot size in order for that to happen. And, I mean, you know, being, you know, family-owned and operated local-type businesses, not all of them, but, you know, a lot are, and in order for us to be able to stand behind that and actually be able to, you know, feed our own families and things of that nature, I personally feel that we do, you know, definitely, I like the recommendation that's going, because that at least gives us an opportunity to display our vehicles, you know, so that people can see them as they drive by. And of course, you know, I definitely would stick with correspondence of what she had spoken to, you know, and the, and the thing that she had brought up for you guys. And I just wanted to have an opportunity to kind of voice my opinion and let you guys know, you know, how detrimental it is to the business, as well as, you know, myself and my family and the others that are in the same business that, you know, would be affected by the situation as well.
Carl?
Thank you, and thanks for being here. How'd you hear about this?
How'd I hear about it? I had just talked to, basically, I just kind of heard about it. I saw the thing on Facebook on the Lincoln Journal Star, and I just wanted to make sure to, to come along and support.
All right. Well, well, good. I'm glad you're here, because one of, one of my concerns about this is, is how this, you know, would impact existing dealers, and don't want to do anything that, that hurts your business, but we're also interested in, in how this impacts the city and, and other property owners along the streets that are, have most of the used car lots, so.
Absolutely.
So it's, yeah, I appreciate your being here.
Yeah, and it wasn't just the used car lots. I mean, this is, this is going to affect the big car lots too, correct? And, you know, you know, it's just a business, and I just want to make sure, you know, that the big guys are protected, as well as the little guys.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Jane?
So are you comfortable with that six-foot setback, but with all the landscaping requirements?
To be perfectly honest with you, the landscaping requirements, I mean, I could go without, but just to give me that extra, I mean, feet that, you know, she's willing to help out with, of course, I stand behind that 100%, because, I mean, like I said, even the six-foot with the shrub is going to be a lot better than, you know, fifteen feet away from, from the actual property itself.
Did you have a question? Okay. And could you just reiterate where your, what your company is and where you're located?
Yes, ma'am. It's Quality Motors, and it's located at fifty-four zero one Superior Street here in Lincoln, and that's six eight five zero four.
So your existing business, and, and are you currently out of compliance because you weren't aware of it, or how will this impact you and them?
Absolutely. I actually just opened doors two weeks ago, and I had already been aware of the six-foot. I hadn't heard anything about the fifteen-foot until I read this in the news. So I am compliant with the six-foot. Well, matter of fact, I'm actually in compliance with your fifteen-foot, because I haven't been able to get maintenance on the yard yet in order to be able to bring the vehicles out further. So, I mean, right now, I'm fifteen beyond feet away, and I'm just trying to get it started and get it open for my, you know, for my family and for everybody. And, and once I get the, you know, the landscaping and everything done, as far as the yard mode and such, I want to be able to move my vehicles up closer to the actual, you know, street so that they can be seen.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
My name is Susan Phelps, and I run West O Auto on twenty-one eleven O Street. And with the drawback of us having to pull our vehicles back from the road, if we were to have to comply with the fifteen, I'd lose spots for sixty-five of my vehicles. And that would basically shut us down, because I wouldn't have any of the vehicles that I sell. With having that drawback, I can do with the six feet and still be able to keep the business afloat and bring in a profit for our business. But with the fifteen-foot back, I'm only going to have room for about thirty vehicles, whereas I have a, a lot where I can house almost a hundred and thirty vehicles. But with that drawback, that's just going to devastate us too much. And I'm in agreeance with what she had said with the six-foot. We can be in compliance with that, but the fifteen-foot, that would just close our doors, along with a lot of smaller businesses down that street for some of the other car lots as well.
Cindy?
How long have you been open out there on West O?
Almost two years.
And did you buy a lot that was actually somebody doing business of a different type?
Yes, the business that we wound up renting over there, the property, was actually an old quick shop. And then we expanded to the neighbor next to us, and they were a car lot. So.
And the, never mind, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? You can both come forward and, well.
Marty Lee, Neighbor Works, Lincoln, very much opposed to this. We have been, the first that I heard of this, the issue was that we have an ordinance in place of fifteen feet, but it's not, it's not enforced, and so therefore, let's change it and make it every, everything be in compliance. I'm sorry, but that's not the way that you work on, on beautification of an area. I mean, there was a reason for this ordinance in the first place. The people that you're hearing from today have been in business, and so we are not shutting their business down. This is the way it has been. I was concerned very much about the issue of residential areas next door, so I was pleased to hear that they've changed that, because there's nothing worse than being in residence and all of a sudden seeing a bunch of cars parked in your front yard. The other issue that I have is that a lot of these side yards aren't even paved, they're not, not developed, they're just grass lots. I'm sorry, but that's, in my mind, that's not acceptable for vehicles anywhere, even in your own yard. You don't put your vehicles on grass. If you look at the area around P Street and Twenty-second Street, we've got a whole block full of used cars. And I'm not opposed to used cars, but they're parking on the sidewalks, they're parking on the driveways. If we're talking about changing this to a six-foot from the property line, and you're going to put some bushes, and you're going to have a sidewalk, and that's not going to happen. You know that's not going to happen. They're not going to be putting, if they're concerned about their cars looking, being visible from the street, they're not going to be putting bushes in front of there. I think we have to be realistic about this. It, I think it needs a little bit more work. I'm, we're, we've talked to different neighborhood associations, we had the city planner look at all the different locations that could be impacted by this. I just think that the idea of maybe expanding the, the number of parking spaces available for the employees is fine. I don't have any problems with that, but the other two issues, that we're very much opposed to that.
Cindy?
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. Can, can you tell me where, when you said some of the side lots, that they're just grass lots, do you have some examples of that?
Twenty-second and P. I should have probably taken some pictures.
Oh, at the Twenty-second and P?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's just one. I mean, I haven't gone around and, and looked at everything. It's over by Antelope Square and all that, but.
And so Neighbor Works wasn't part of the planning commission's review of this particular request? Did you just not know about it?
Oh, no, I knew about it. We, we've been involved from the very beginning with, when this issue first came up a couple of months ago. We were at the planning commission, talked there.
Okay, and so I, I guess I didn't see anything in there about testimony, did you?
We did to staff.
I'll ask Dave when he comes up. Thanks so much for your coming today.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Members of the council, my name is Terry Barber. I am a lawyer here in town. I represent the neighbor to A and B Auto Sales, which is a company by the name of SL Corporation, which is owned by Larry and Cheryl Snyder. I don't think I want to plow the ground that's already been plowed. I think you have in front of you the staff report, the report from the planning director and from the planning commission, and I think, unless I miscounted, all of the things that the commission noted in the, in their discussion of this matter have been demonstrated here this afternoon. We, we haven't had enough go into the study of this. It's going to create too much chaos, and it looks like we're using or trying to use a text amendment to deal with a spot problem. So for the, for the reasons that the, that staff made their report and the commission voted only for conditional approval, I would simply urge you to do the same and, and approve the reduction in parking spaces for the two acre and, and less lots, but deny the text amendment changes with respect to side yard and front yard. Thank you. Twenty, at three hundred North Forty-four Street, number two oh five in Lincoln.
Cindy?
Thank you. This, thanks for being here today. The Snyder's, aren't they the folks that so, that have a purchase and sale agreement with A and B for part of that lot that's on the corner?
Well, it's, it's a strip. I don't have a map in front of me. If you go to the steakhouse and to the parking lot in the, in the, in the, on the west side of the restaurant.
Correct.
There's a light pole, okay? That light pole essentially defines the west boundary of the steakhouse lot, okay, which really shorts them as far as display area. So what, what we had proposed was to sell them the rest of that paving, because that, that lamp post is in the middle of the paved area, and, and so there is an agreement to sell them additional space to the west of the restaurant.
Okay. And at the time of the sale, did the Snyder's know that the folks are going to be looking to, to change the zoning?
No. We had, we had, we had, because of the, the amount of space that was being sold, we had to make it subject to subdivision. There are two lots on the corner. One is a hundred and fifty feet square that butts the intersection itself, and then there's another lot, number one fifteen, that is kind of a boot around that. We had no idea, I mean, the, the, when the subdivision requirements came back, it was quite a litany of things that were needing to be addressed, which we hadn't anticipated, certainly not zoning change.
Were, one of the zoning requirements, I think that, I'm sorry, the subdivision requirements, as I recall, was to build a sidewalk on Thirty-third Street by the, from the, the point of the railroad tracks and north to Cornhusker.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and has, has A and B Auto agreed to do that in order to help with the subdivision if the purchase goes through?
My understanding is that they're, they're willing to split the costs of the subdivision.
Okay, and are there any other, are there parts of subdividing that lot that, that the Snyder's are not comfortable with? Is, could that be one of the reasons that they're opposing this?
Well, it's, it's difficult to tell how many different wheels are turning at one time. There is concern about the, the logistics of this particular sales lot and its impact on the value of the corner, if that's, if that's the question, yes. Is there a, a separate and distinct interest? Yes, there is.
How, do you know how long it's been vacant?
Two thousand and five.
Thank you.
You're talking about on the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the buildings that were there were demolished in two thousand and five in May.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Do we need some staff questions? Anyone? Yep, come on up.
Andrew Theroff, Planning Department.
Thank you for being here. Jane and John?
Could you explain the, the diagram that you put up on and what that represents? I wasn't catching it.
Yeah. So this is A and B's site at Thirty-third and Cornhusker. There you go. So this, this is A and B Auto. That's the old steakhouse restaurant. They were going to do a final plat, or they're, they have a final plat in process to move this line so that the entire A and B lot is on their own property. And we had notified them that they're in violation of a few zoning items. One is the front yard here. It either has to be twenty feet, or they can go down to twelve feet if they put in the landscaping, and right now they're at zero feet. And then on this west side, that would be a side yard, and the side yard's fifteen feet, and they're, you know, they're at zero feet right now. And then they weren't meeting the required parking as well.
John?
Yes, my understanding is that the administration may want to put this on hold and discuss it a little bit more. Has that been discussed, as we would have it for vote next week? and discuss it a little bit more. Has that been discussed, as we would have it for vote next week? I'm just thinking, if, if that is the case, we might wanna leave the public hearing open, depending what changes might come about, if any.
I wouldn't say we wanna put it on hold necessarily. Uh, I know one item that's somewhat hanging out there is that in the somewhat near future, we'd like to do, uh, a more comprehensive look at Cornhusker, Westo, those corridors, those entryway corridors. So looking at, you know, things like setbacks, landscaping for all uses. Um, so that would, uh, perhaps shed some more light on what we should do about car sales specifically. Um, so we'd, I think we'd prefer not to do any action, uh, that would affect the corridor before a study like that is completed. But I mean, we're talking a while before that would be approved, or even start, so.
Well, where the city has not been enforcing the law on the books, or the zoning on the books. If we had a delay or we just didn't take action on this pending the study, what would you do in the interim?
I think that would ultimately be a question for building and safety. But right now, it's, it's on a complaint basis, and I, I don't think there'd be any stepped-up enforcement before this study were to take place. I, I could say that.
Cindy.
Thank you. We've had a conversation about this, Andrew. Thank you very much for being here. I wanted to talk about a couple of things, like the, one of the things that the gal from Westo talked about was she took over an existing, um, business property, and hasn't that kind of added to the non-compliance issue?
So, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll explain setbacks a little bit.
Okay.
In the area. Um, so in H2 and H3, parking is actually a zero-foot setback. So you can have parked cars, uh, up to the lot line, except new parking lots, we have our parking lot design standards where there's a six-foot screening buffer in place. Uh, but along Cornhusker and Westo, every parking lot basically predates that. So we have parking lots all along that, that stretch that have a zero-foot setback legally. Um, so those areas can be used for parking of cars, um, but they can't be used for car sales, display of cars for sale, unless there was, uh, a car dealer, probably going back to 1979 or beforehand. They would potentially be grandfathered in.
So, eh, part of it is a logistical thing. Now you have a zero parking setback, and now you're being asked to do 12 or 15 feet or whatever, and, and screening. You would have to literally like tear out asphalt and concrete in order to do the screening in an existing business.
Uh, correct. Um, so the setback today's 20 feet. So if you did 20 feet, you could leave the pavement, and, I mean, you could have car parking in that first 20 feet. You just couldn't have cars displayed for sale. But yes, if you wanted to go 12 feet away, you would need to tear out pavement and put in landscaping.
And so this, um, my understanding is if we went to the six-foot, that the, um, the applicants have, uh, agreed to do a 90% screening. That would be part of the six-foot, uh, change. Six-foot setback, 90% screening, just to beautify the entrance and exits of the city?
Correct, yeah. Um, so as you, right now, they have a zero-foot setback. They'd be putting in a six-foot landscape buffer.
Okay. Um, I think that'd be a great improvement at 33rd and 35th and Cornhusker. That's been vacant and dirt basically since 2005. Thank you.
Roy.
I gotta admit, I'm a little perplexed. So, used cars that belong to a private citizen who drives on their lot and parks there are okay, but used cars for sale are not?
Yeah, so it's, it's the way we look at it as, um, the inherent differences between a parking lot and a car sales lot.
But there's still cars parked along the street.
Yep, that's correct. Um, but with a car sales lot, there's, there's basically always cars there, all the time. Parking lot, there's probably some portion of there where there's no cars parked there. Um, and for many businesses, the parking lot's never completely full. Uh, car sales lot also could have like, you know, stickers on the windows or balloons, just things like that.
And those are bad because?
Well, from an aesthetic purpose, I think would be, be the main question of cars parked right along the property line all the time, or you'll have, with a, with a parking lot, there's probably a lot of time where there's not actually any cars parked there.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
Carl.
I, I appreciate the work that's being done on this from everybody's standpoint. It just, it seems like an issue that, that does need some attention. I think especially about, uh, some of the main streets impacted, uh, Cornhusker and Westo in particular. Uh, I'm not sure I counted them all. Uh, might, may have counted some twice, but, uh, from Northwest 48th Street to the Harris Overpass, I think I counted 20 used car lots on that, that stretch of road. And, and that's a, you know, it's an entryway right into downtown. And if there's some way that we could have some consistency there, which we have on the books now, but it's not, um, not enforced, that would improve property values. We just had before this a, a hearing on another issue that, you know, was trying to improve property values on the Westo, and, and this would help as well. So, um, I, I guess just speaking personally, I, I would, would like to see us, uh, dig in and, and kind of figure this out long-term. Would be good.
Jane.
So I guess this is a little bit confusing. We, we, we have a standard right now, but it's not being enforced. So we're asking to put in a new standard, and how's that new standard going to be enforced or in compliance? And then in the, the paperwork that we received, they talked about some places being grandfathered in. So, it's, it's somewhat confusing, and it looks like a, um, a mismatch of, of ideas and trying to, you know, work with the, the current dealers, but trying to get some compliance, because what is the current standard? Is it a 12-foot setback, or?
Yep, so in H2 and H3, the current standard is, a 20-foot setback is the setback for all principal uses. So buildings and everything is 20 feet, but car dealers, um, they get a little bit of a break. It's a 12-foot setback if they put in landscaping. Uh, so yes, that would be the closest you could be. It would be 12 feet with landscaping today. Um, yeah, and enforcement is on a complaintment, or complaint basis. From what I understand, the building and safety just doesn't get that many complaints. Um, I know they're looking at a potentially, uh, new way to enforce this, or a way to more systematically address this in the future. Uh, I don't think there's a specific plan yet, but this has certainly brought the issue to light with, with building and safety.
So do other municipalities, to create that enforcement, do they make them post a bond for, like, a landscaping bond to, to prove that they've actually done the landscaping work? Or, I mean, i- is that discussed in this, or I don't think so, right?
No, we haven't discussed how it would specifically be enforced. I mean, that would be more building and safety's, uh, territory there. I just know they're, they're looking at how to improve enforcement for car dealers.
Roy then John?
Can you give me an, do you have any idea of how many of these lots that are out there right now are grandfathered in to an old system?
Yeah, um, and that's really the, the challenge, is that, um, so in 2002, that's when this 12-foot setback was created. Um, so say, 2001, the H2 and H3 districts were, it was actually a 25-foot and a 30-foot setback at the time. Uh, but, uh, in 2001, and I think until 1979, there was a special permit where you could get a special permit to encroach into the front yard if you were a car dealer. That went away in 2002, so there could be some car dealers that got that special permit 20 years ago. There was just a small handful of those special permits we ever issued, though. Um, and then if we're talking about grandfathering, you'd probably need to go back before 1979. And if there were any car dealers operating then, that have remained in operation as car dealers since then, they could potentially be grandfathered in, but again, whatever district they were in pre-1979, that still could have had a 20, 30-foot setback, so. Basically, to determine if anyone's grandfathered in, it'd take quite a bit of site-specific research on the history of any particular site. I would say very few are grandfathered in. I could say that.
Okay. Um, John?
I guess I'd like to make a motion that we put this on pending for two weeks and have a dialogue with the administration and see exactly what we're gonna do. I was here in the early 2000s when we looked at entryway corridors. I know Jeff Fortenberry is on the council then, and we were, he and I were very strict on that need to do that in Westo and other places. But I think, uh, perhaps a- as the policies were brought forth, that, uh, and in light of conditions, that we just, we need to reevaluate what we're doing. And rather than piecemeal it here, uh, subject these business people to enforcement, uh, maybe we just hold off here and, and see in the next two weeks, and then we can say what we do from there. But I think there needs to be a dialogue outside these chambers, so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Um, I would ask that the hearing be held open. I understand that as part of that, in '02, the Lincoln, or the Westo Business Association was involved also. We haven't really heard from them yet. Um, I would just, before we take a vote, though, if we could just ask if there's a deadline for the sale to take place? If we, you know, if there's anything we should be cognizant on that, in that regard? And so if we could, if maybe the applicant could come back up, would that be all right with everyone?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Uh, with respect to your, your question, um, there, the purchase agreement contemplates that there will be, um, a subdivision that is finalized through the plat procedure with the city, and this, um, process that we've engaged in became necessary in order to do that. And so I think the, the delay of, um, a couple of weeks, if the council members so choose, would be fine.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend that to be three weeks to the 22nd, because the 15th is the meeting in which we will change councils, the new, so that doesn't really fit too well.
So it was moved by John, seconded by Cindy, and
I accept that.
And the friendly amendment from Roy to change that to a three-week delay. Uh, and, and you said pending, is that, did you want it pending, or just a delay with public hearing?
Since we are doing a date certain, it's not really pending. It's a, just delay it with a date certain. Hold the public hearing open.
Yep.
Thank you.
I guess my one question, though, would be that if, in fact, this is a larger issue that you want looked at, is, is a date certain? I mean, do we think that that's enough time?
Well, I, I think it's important to give some finality here to this particular motion, and then if, though, through discussions, there's a decision to accelerate an entryway corridor review or something, at least we'll have more definition. Right now, it's taking a piece of the puzzle, and I don't think that's good for the city, the neighborhoods, nor the businesses.
And do you want action on the 22nd, Ben?
Yes, under my.
With public hearing and action. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just have a question for Ms. Glenn.
Yes.
Um, you, you spoke before that your, your clients would accept a, a six-foot setback with landscaping requirements fulfilled. Can you talk about a mechanism that the city could put in place that maybe you've seen in your, your practice in Omaha, that other municipalities have done on the enforcement side? Do they put, for, request a bond? While you're here, I mean, we can continue to this dialogue for three weeks, but what, what have you seen?
Well, first and foremost, I think it would be important to have an, um, at least maybe one or two or even three informational sessions that are very widely publicized throughout the city of Lincoln for, um, members in the H2, H3 zoning district, so that, um, there can be a, kind of like a mini town hall meeting to explain this new zoning ordinance that is put into effect. Um, explain how, um, I mean, just as, just as the other car dealers that were here before you, um, explain to you, they understand that they're going to be subject to the new design standards and not grandfathered in, um, as they may be now. But they understand the overall goal is to be able to have the six-foot, um, front yard setback and still maintain their business and their livelihood. And so I think information is key, um, communication is key with everybody involved. And with respect to a, a bond, um, that might be, um, one mechanism that could be implicated to ensure that, um, folks do it. Otherwise, certainly, uh, more enforcement by the city building officials to, you know, do random, um, drive-by evaluations and observations, and have more communication with these folks to tell them what the current zoning ordinances are, and go from there. Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, you can have a seat. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion on the motion to delay action with public hearing to May 22nd? Trent's very happy. He's not gonna, to be here with us.
I was gonna vote no.
All right, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. No one else wishes to come forward? That concludes our public hearing portion. We can move into the voting session.
I don't see anyone else coming forward. In fact, everyone's leaving.
All right, public hearing resolutions. Item 24 is Big Red Restaurant and Sports Bar as a keynote satellite at 8933 Anderbath Drive, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 25 is the report of claims for the period of April 1st through the 15th, introduced by Eskridge.
Second by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 26 is the interlocal agreement with county corrections for roadside litter pickup, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 27 is the interlocal agreement with the UNL Board of Regions to provide, maintain, and update online food handler training programs, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading, are items 28 through 35. Or it says third reading, item 36. Approving the 11th and P and Lincoln Commercial Club redevelopment agreement, introduced by Christianson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 38 is amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate 1.5 million in TIF funds for the project, introduced by Christianson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 30-
Skipped one. 37? Did you do 37?
That was item 37. Item 38 is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds, introduced by Christianson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 39 is street and alley vacation 17001, vacating a portion of the northeast corner of the intersection of South Canopy and N Street right-of-way, introduced by Christianson.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion? This is that important piece of property that's so large.
I wanted that one.
Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items 40 through 43, and ordinances first reading are items 44 through 47.
Seconded by Trent, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.[1781.14]